This meeting of the Independent School District 535 is called to order at 4:02 PM, Tuesday, August 1st, 2017, in room 137 of the Edison Building. Present at the board table is Mr. Michael Munoz, Superintendent of Schools and a non-voting ex officio member of the Board. Also present is Ms. Wendy Edgar, the Assistant Board Clerk. Ms. Edgar, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Barlow.
Here.
Mrs. Becker. Ms. Marvin.
Here.
Mr. Schlusner.
Here.
Ms. Seelinger.
Here.
Mr. Smith. Chair Workman.
Here. Let's stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Georgia, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. 2.01, Approval of the Agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda, Mr. Munoz?
No changes.
Move approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Announcements and Communications, 3.01, Recognitions. Mr. Munoz.
First off, I'd like to have Julie Niggin come and join me. It's a pleasure to share and welcome Julie to the podium today. As you know, Julie very recently retired from leading our adult literacy program at Hawthorne. I recently learned that Julie will be awarded the 2017 Outstanding Service and Achievement Award from the Minnesota Literacy Action Network, the statewide network of adult literacy professionals. Each year, the network selects one winner whose service has made significant impact on their program, their region, or the state. As you probably know, Julie's work in adult literacy has impacted the field at all three of those levels, as well as nationally. We have had the honor of celebrating some of her successes here at the board table, but many more were behind the scenes, key relationships, support of students, policy work, successful grants, and many, many more. Jason Brazer, President of the Literacy Action Network, had this to say about Julie's award. "It is known to many that Julie is one of the true gems in the ABE field. An effective program manager, advocate in learner healthcare and employment, stronger promoter of adult education and legislative issues, her contributions have made her a true representative of the phrase 'outstanding service and achievement.' Literacy Action Network is honored to have her as a member. I personally look forward to officially presenting her the award at the ABE Summer Institute." Julie will receive her award at the ABE Summer Institute Conference later this month. Please join me in thanking Julie for her contributions to our own students and programs, as well as her legacy in the adult literacy field.
I'm glad you sat down because, you know, when you stand, you make me look even shorter. Pardon my voice. You retire, you get sick. Caught a cold, and it won't let me go. Well, I want to thank you for your kind thoughts and for your applause, and I have just one thing to say, and that is that in the 37 years that I worked for the school district, I feel like from the students, well, from the teachers, from the administrators, from my friends and colleagues, but mostly from my students, I learned more than I taught and I received more than I gave. Thank you all.
At this time, I'd like to call Heather Nestler, Executive Director of Communications, Marketing, and Technology.
Good evening, Board members. I'm here to brief you very quickly on a special back-to-school week that we have worked so hard on. Curriculum and instruction, along with student services and a variety of other departments in our district, have come together to create two days of substantial professional development for our staff, for our certified teachers, paraprofessionals, and other individuals. So I'm just sharing with you a sneak peek of the booklet that will be coming out in the mail today. It should be hitting mailboxes in the following week. But it was a collaboration, I'm going to pass this around here in a second, but it was a collaboration from multiple departments for two days of back-to-school professional development. And when I looked through this, I was just completely surprised by how many subject matter experts we have in our district, the folks teaching the courses, and we have courses that cover envoy, mental health, poverty in the classroom, trauma, technology, formative assessment, you name it, we've got it covered. And looking at this, a lot of the experts come from within our district, and a lot of the experts come from outside of our district as well. We have some folks from MDE coming down to present, along with some other subject matter experts. So I'm just really proud of our staff, and I'm speaking on behalf of all of our cabinet just how great our leadership is here to be able to present to all of our teachers. We have 103 courses, I believe, coming up. So I'll pass this around.
Munoz, is it current?
That is the schedule for, of events for the back-to-school week, which is August 28th through September 1st. The two days of professional development will be Tuesday and Wednesday, the 29th and 30th. And so some staff are going to be automatically registered, which they'll receive an email for the courses they're automatically registered for, which are some mandatory courses like department meetings, envoy, and math, yeah. So some of the courses will be automatically registered, the rest are choice, and so it really gives you an opportunity to pick what's going to work best for you.
Okay. Any other questions?
3.02, Introduction of New Administrators. Mr. Munoz.
I think I'll ask all of you to come up and join me right now. Before I list the names of the individuals, and some of them were able to join us tonight and some were not, an interesting fact here, you should recognize all of these individuals because they are individuals within the system who have worked their way up into a different administrative position, which I think, and it wasn't a given, it was a very thorough interview process, and we did interview some outside candidates, but when everything was decided, we end up going with our own people, and I think it's really great that we can, I guess, grow your own, and you have individuals who know your system and who are doing well in certain buildings, and they're going to experiment or go to a principal position in other buildings. So I think it's a reflection of the type of quality of administrators that we have within our system, not just principals, assistant principals, associate principals, directors and supervisors, that we're able to grow them and eventually have them serve as principals in the system. And I'll just say, I've been in public education over 30, quite a few, over 30 years, and education has become much more difficult than it has back, I'll just say, back in the day when I started. And the job is much more challenging, not only for our teachers, but for administrators, and, you know, back in the day, administrators were managers, and that's what you did. You managed the system, your building, and made sure the buses got where they need to be, and kids got where they got to be, and we were good to go. But you still have to do all of that, but we also ask them to be instructional leaders as well. And so I think the job has gotten a lot more complicated, and administration is kind of one of those professions that doesn't always get a lot of recognition and a lot of thank yous. I think I shared with them last year, leadership, I showed them a picture of a small people in line to talk to an individual, and then a longer line of people to talk to another individual, and the longer line were the people who were coming to complain to administrators about certain things, and very few were lined up to tell them the great job they're doing. So I guess tonight I would like to do that. Okay, I've talked too much, so I'm sorry. If you could just kind of wave or whatever when I say your name, that would be great. And some of the, like I said, some of the individuals are here and some were not able to join us. Nicole Ferguson is the new principal at Gage Elementary. She used to be at John Marshall, okay? Michelle Gates, John Marshall Assistant Principal, used to be the Associate Principal at John Marshall. Jared is not here. You guys remember Jared. Jared will be the new principal at, he's leaving Gage, and will be at Bishop Elementary. Kim Howard, John Adams Middle School Associate Principal, not here today. Heidi Howe, Riverside Assistant Principal, she was the Associate Principal at Riverside. And then Jen Urki is going to be here in the Edison Building, Director of Special Education. And Heather Klobb, Klobbeter, is that right? Did I pronounce that right? Klobbeter. Gage Elementary Associate Principal. Teresa Lenander, Kellogg Middle School Associate Principal. And remind me, Teresa, what you were, were you the...
Instructional.
Instructional coach, that's what I thought, okay? And Levi was at Riverside, temporarily was going to be somewhere else, but he, through the process, he's going to be the new principal at Fidel Middle School. Brandon McCraffick is not here tonight, but he's going to be the principal at CTEC. Kate Palmquist, left Bishop, and is going to be a principal on special assignment in charge of the elementary. Sam Pearson, former Associate Principal at Gage, will now be Associate Principal at Bamber Valley. Don Trapp, Riverside Elementary School Associate Principal. And Patty Whalen, John Adams Middle School Assistant Principal. Michael Widman, Kellogg Middle School Assistant Principal. I do believe he was Associate Principal at Kellogg. Heather Willman is principal on special assignment, going to be in charge of the secondary level. And I think that's all of them, I do believe, yes. And also, members of the family, if you could stand up, and we can recognize you and thank you for being here. So I don't know if I have, we'll have any takers, but if any of you would like to say a few words, we'd more than welcome that. Don't all rush at the same time.
Thanks for springing up.
Thank you.
Congratulations. 3.03, School Board Committee Assignment Updates. School Board Members. Director Marvin.
Yes. Deborah Seelinger and I were, attended the Community Focus Team Meeting, potluck dinner. We continue to have a great group of people who are working on ways that our community can be involved, more involved with our kids and supporting our schools. We're also keenly aware that in addition to this group of people who are coming together and looking at specifically what the purpose should be, how we're going to move forward together, also want to make us aware of the fact that there are all kinds of things that are going on in our community that individuals and the groups of people are doing towards making this a more equitable community. There was a group, for instance, that were, they staged a program to fight against sort of this white nationalist group, and they called it Not in Our Town. And I think one of the things we're going to try to do is, in a much more organized way, call out some of the great work that people are doing alone and together in Rochester because there are all kinds of good things that go unrecognized, but they're making a difference, and sometimes it's just, it's one person, one group at a time.
Ms. Seelinger.
Thank you. I have a few things to report on, although Mr. Schlusner said my calendar didn't look very busy. Felt busy. Director Schlusner, Director Workman, and Superintendent and some cabinet members and I were able to attend the Native American Presentation on Professional Development given by Guthrie Cap...
Capcelius. Guthrie.
Guthrie. Sorry, Guthrie. And Tucker Cutone on learning more about how to, Native American history and our Native American students, which I think was really impactful and important for us to see. I had a, got to learn a lot. I appreciated that opportunity. May I continue?
Yes, please.
Okay. Thank you. Also, I attended the Iron Chef Challenge at the ALC, the proceeds going to the Green Thumb Initiative, and just want to give a shout-out to those who not only put together that event, but the students who worked so hard, growing the vegetables, seeing, playing the sous chef for the evening. It was a ton of fun. I'm sorry if you missed it. I hope they do it again. We got to try some wonderful food, something with nine vegetables in it. I don't think I've ever eaten nine vegetables at a time. Director, Mr. Queasley was there with me as well, and I think would agree that that was a great time, so I hope they repeat that. Also, just on a bigger front, would like to mention that the draft of the Every Student Succeed Act State Plan has now hit the website, Minnesota Department of Education website, and is open for comments. Folks are able to go there and make, read that over and make comments, and I don't know if it will be, Commissioner Capcelius or her staff will be in Rochester on August 16th at JM, 6:00 to 7:30 for the public to hear about that and ask questions, and so even though we will have another board meeting before then, this is my save-the-date. Important work was done at MDE on that plan, and I think we all should at least hear what's going to be coming up next.
Yeah, the Commissioner will be here.
Yeah.
Is that all? That's enough. Okay. Anybody else? All right. Consent Agenda, this is an action item. Do Board Members have any items they would like removed for separate consideration? Then I'll entertain a motion. Move approval. Second. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Efficient and Effective Operations. We will start with 7.03, Approval of Employee Pretax Payroll Deductions for Voluntary Benefit Programs. This is a briefing item. Mr. Munoz.
Yes, at this time, I'll have John Carlson, Executive Director of Finance, brief us on this item.
Great. Thank you, Board, for being flexible. We're waiting for one of my colleagues who's stuck in traffic to do the other two items ahead of this one, so we'll start with 703 here. This one, I had to chuckle when I wrote the item because it says, "Previous action date, December 3rd, 1985." So I think I was in second grade when this was approved. But the purpose of this item is, back then, the district thought it was a good idea to offer to the employees the AFLAC insurance. It's a benefit that the districts can buy that at group rates, but it's all at the employee's cost. There's no cost to the district other than we're spending a little bit of time in payroll, taking the money out of the checks, and then sending it to AFLAC. As we've looked into it, we believe there might be another vendor that could provide the same services, perhaps at a better product and a cheaper price for our employees, and so we just want to have you amend the resolution from 1985 and say that without vendor specificity, the plan administrator, that would be myself, could make a decision to offer what we feel would be the best program for employees at any given time. So we may do a request for proposals and go and find perhaps a different vendor for this one type of benefit.
I have a question.
Sure.
So then employees would not be able to find a provider, or whatever you would call it, on their own, to which a payroll deduction could be made for the services?
That is correct. We would still pick the vendor, and that would be the one who they'd be allowed to buy.
Okay, great. Thank you for that clarification. I appreciate it. Board Members, any other questions? Great. Thank you, Mr. Carlson. 7.04, Approval of Purchase Agreement for the Sale of Excess Land at the Facility Services Center. This is a briefing item. Mr. Munoz.
Yes, Mr. Carlson will brief us on this item as well.
All right. So this item deals with the sale, or potential sale, of some land at our Facility Services Center, which is located at 3935 Highway 14 East. If you remember, we bought that from People's Energy Cooperative in June of 2013 at a total price of $2,600,000. After that time, we did some renovations to the facility and brought things up to standard, and we've been using it as office space, warehouse space for our facilities department, graduate induction program, Paper Tigers out there, purchasing department, building construction, et cetera. Somebody approached us for the purpose of putting in a warehouse and distribution center to the east side of our property between us and Advanced Disposal. And I'm going to try and actually just bring this up on the screen quick, so we give a reference point of what we're talking about. So this would be a Google Earth image of east side of Rochester on Highway 14. Of course, no one wants to spin on me, but the Facility Service Center is the big building there on the left side of the screen, and then as you go over, that's Advanced Disposable, disposal on the right side, and then there's all that grassy and tree area in between. You can see kind of up at the top, we have a little bit of maintenance activity parked in that gravel area, but for the most part, we're not using that land, and it's just sitting there vacant. So we dug into it, we talked back and forth with the potential buyer, and came to the agreement that we'd be okay with selling a portion of that land to them if the price was right, so we went back and forth on the price a little bit, and we agreed on $65,000 and change per acre. Originally, they wanted 10 acres and then downsized it to about nine, which, if you're looking at that, would just split it basically in two. I'm just going to try one other thing here. So eventually, there's going to be a road that kind of cuts through the property here, and the buyer is looking at buying, or I'm circling right now.
Dang. You broke it.
And now it just went away. Oh, there it is. So they're looking at buying that part that I made the red box around, the road going over there as well. It would still leave then some land here in purple that we could either choose to keep or sell to somebody else in the future. All the costs for moving sewer, water, electricity would all be at the buyer's expense to get to that red area because most of those utilities stop at our property. So we'll probably have to deal with them on easements and such on going across our property for that as well. I guess at this point, I would take any questions on kind of the nature of the deal or anything you might be wondering.
So the road, is that their responsibility or ours?
Technically, right now, it's nobody's responsibility.
Okay.
That's a desire of the city to extend that road. When it comes time, it's probably the developer, so if we are the developer of that purple area, we would be probably passing those costs on to whoever was selling that parcel at that time. But the city would not mandate that the road go in right now just because we're selling off the red section.
Those are great graphics.
Thank you. Tried something new today.
Board Members, anything else? This is a briefing item.
Yeah, if we could move it to action.
Yeah, I think the buyer would appreciate that because then there'd be 120 days of due diligence activities that would kick off as soon as you approve it. I forgot to mention that potentially then, depending on how this goes, the closing would be somewhere between December 29th and February 29th if everything works out. Just like when we go and make an offer on property, there is that due diligence period. If something comes up, they feel they want to back out, they certainly can, and, you know, that might be just what happens, so.
Move to action.
Okay. It's been moved to action and seconded. Is there any discussion about moving this item to action? Hearing none. It is now an action item. Oh, we have to vote, sorry. I had myself. All those in favor of moving this to action, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Now it is an action item. Be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 535 does hereby approve the purchase agreement with Scanell Properties LLC in the amount of $588,060 for the sale of approximately nine acres located at 3935 Highway 14 East Rochester, Minnesota. Move approval.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Carlson.
Is Stacy arrived? Is it okay if you go on to the next second, and then we'll circle back? Thank you.
7.05, Approval of a Three-Year Agreement with Mayo Clinic Sports Medicine. This is a briefing item. Mr. Munoz.
Yes, at this time, I'll call Mark Queasley, Century Athletic Director, to brief us on
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Board Members, Mr. Munoz, Ms. Edgar. Before you is our briefing item. We've been working on this since about November, trying to come up with a long-term agreement with the Mayo Sports Medicine and get out of our one-year renewals, and this is our first time that we're looking at a three-year agreement with Mayo Clinic and the services they offer. Originally, last year, our costs were about $104,000 for the three schools. This is not a typo. We'll be going down to $81,000, and I'll explain that as we go through this. So for this coming year, it'll be $81,000 with the cost of living increases over the next two years of the agreement, as you can see there. So Mayo Clinic is going to continue with their day-to-day coverage, Monday through Friday, with their national certified athletic trainers, and also continue with our baseline concussion testing. Basically, they'll test any student that we wish to have tested in that concussion management. Right now, it's football, boys and girls soccer, wrestling, pitchers and catchers in baseball and softball, and lacrosse. And then also, they will supply daily coverage for our strength and conditioning coaches for all three schools. We will continue to collaborate on our Speed and Agility and Quickness, which is our summer program through the Sports Medicine Department. And new end of the agreement is a nutritional specialist. We are finding that as we got our student athletes ready for practice, we needed to make sure that we had the care and prevention piece in there, then we added a strength and conditioning, and now we're realizing that there's a nutritional factor that those students also need to do because they're in school all day long and then need to get ready for after-school activities. So this contract offers us four hours of a nutritionist that will come in and meet with our teams and our coaches per month, per building, and then also, new to this is sports performance, and again, four hours by site, by, four hours of service per month by site for the sports performance specialists. And those people are there as a resource to help us manage our after-school programs and work with our coaches and collaborate with common practices, best practices in coaching techniques, along with the nutrition piece. And then we will also be adding a collaboration event that will be mutually agreed upon between Rochester Public Schools and the Mayo Clinic. That part is still in the works. We've got some ideas on that, but we're going to continue to collaborate over this first calendar year to figure out what that event might be. It's kind of basically a community event where we partner with them. We've got some ideas, but again, that one's, that part's still in the works. And the last part we're excited about is the fact that we are now reaching a three-year agreement with some advertisement with this contract. The advertisement actually reduce our costs for our programming, and so we are looking at $23,400 in advertisement that we will be doing on behalf of Mayo Clinic at our athletic events. It is some signage in our gyms and our stadiums, and then also public address, social media on the athletic components of the social media part, for a three-year cost of over $64,000 to the district by entering into this new agreement. How many students do we impact? We're impacting over 50% of our students, 9 through 12, with these additional services for after-school. We have over 50% participation in our extracurricular activities at our high school, so it's a great bang for our buck. They would also like to come to a future board meeting and do a little presentation as to what each component is helping our student athletes with. So at this point, I'll see if there are any questions.
Mr. Barlow.
Chair Workman, Mr. Queasley, quick question, and it's more of a question of clarification in my own mind. I kind of remember, it's regarding lacrosse. I thought lacrosse was kind of like a, more of a club sport than a district sport.
That was correct. It was a non-school-funded program at one time. It was a non-school-funded program at one time, yes.
It is now, however, a district program?
Correct. This fall, it will be a, well, this calendar year, it will be a district program, correct.
Okay. And that answers all of my subsequent questions, and thank you.
Okay, great. Mr. Queasly, what budget does this come out of?
This is contracted services within each one of our three buildings, so we just divide that amount by three and do blanket purchase orders for the year.
So this should really help them out?
Yes, it will.
Ms. Seelinger.
Mr. Queasly, my question is about the advertising costs and where do the, or the advertising income, and I know we had a large discussion about that a few years ago, does that just get rolled back into?
Basically, this is an in-kind service, so it's coming off the top of our contract as a collaboration effort, so.
Thank you. One more point of clarification. Did, did I hear you correctly? Did you say you've been working on this since November?
Yeah, I, I meet with the Mayo Clinic's support staff on a yearly basis. We have a year-end evaluation, and this has been almost a year in progress, this agreement, yeah.
Well, thank you for your persistence in saving us money and making sure that this is available to all of our, our student athletes, so.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mark, is there any urgency to get this approved, or?
Yeah, we start practice on the fourteenth of this month, so it would be beneficial for us to finally put this to rest, please.
Move to action.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion about moving this item to action? Hearing none. All those in favor of moving this item to action, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. It is now an action item. Be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 535 does hereby approve a three-year agreement with Rochester Public Schools and Mayo Clinic Sports Medicine. All in favor, please say.
Motion.
I need a motion.
Motion.
Second.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Queasly.
Thank you. And again, on behalf of the coaches and student athletes in all three of our schools, thank you for the continued support.
So I believe we can go back to item seven point oh one, acceptance of proposals for the sale and issuance of certificates of participation, series twenty seventeen A. This is a briefing item. Mr. Munoz.
Yes, at this time, John Carlson and Stacy's going to join us today.
I appreciate your accommodation. I underestimated the amount of construction on fifty-two.
Yes, we all do.
That's been a common thing this summer, so, yes, we're here today. Stacy's going to brief us on what happened at our bond and certificate sales this morning. We'll deal with just the certificates first. And just as a reminder, we have twenty-four hours to accept or decline this. Is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
So we will need you to move this to action if you want us to proceed with borrowing the money when we're done hearing from Stacy.
Well, good evening, and thank you for having me here. It's a pleasure to see everyone. Spring study solicited bids for both of your issues this morning at ten AM. I'll cover the certificates, and then we'll move to the bonds after that. We received five bids for your certificates of participation. And just a point of interest on these, this is the first time that, well, the second time that a school district has competitively bid certificates of participation in recent years. They've been a negotiate, done via a negotiated sale process in the past, just given the, there's an annual appropriation that's assigned to them, and they're not allowed, they're not eligible for participation in the credit enhancement program. But St. Paul's School District did sell their certificates competitively, and John and I discussed and felt like the Rochester name and strong credit rating was good enough that we could, we, and we had enough indication from underwriters that they would bid on this type of security. So we went out to the market and we received five bids, which is excellent. We always like to see three at least. Rochester typically sees anywhere from four to probably eight, I would say. Piper Jaffrey submitted the lowest bid, and Piper's purchased some of your debt in the past. Our projections in May were two point seven two eight for a true interest cost, so that takes the entire, all the different maturity amounts and time values it back to the present value to get that amount. Final results came in at two point five eight two, so that's going to save your district a little bit in issuance costs. Interest cost, excuse me. We had a spread of point one three percent from high to low on the interest rates that we received. And it looks like the second highest bidder was only point zero one percent, which is just interesting when you get, it's very competitive. That's all I have for this.
Any questions, Board members?
I should have mentioned what these are for. So the certificates are for the addition that we're doing at Hoover Elementary School for the preschool space. So as Stacy said, these do have the annual appropriation clause in them, so if ever a year you did not want to budget for these and pay them back, you could do so, and we would be turning the keys over to US Bank because they'll be holding it in trust for us, and then it would be their property. We would, I would highly recommend that we never do that, but that is an option to get out of it if we ever had to.
Doing that could cause some damage to your credit rating.
Absolutely.
One point of, one other note on these is that Rochester's debt is currently rated double A two and double A for your general obligation debt. It's very common for certificates of participation to be rated one notch below. So we have a double A three and double A minus for their certificates of participation, and that's just due to the annual appropriation nature.
Slightly more risk, so that's why, as, when she briefs us on the next one, you'll see that the interest rate's just a little bit lower on that one because there's a lot of guarantee we'll pay those back.
So, Mr. Carlson, I'm assuming that you don't anticipate rebooting all of this and getting something that is a little bit better, so you would like us to move this to action?
I would like you to move it to action, and do we need to do a roll call vote when we do this? So we need each person to say aye as we go down the line, so.
Do we need to do that, moving it to action as well?
First.
Okay.
So moved. Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion about moving this to action? All those in favor of moving this to action, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. It is now an action item. Be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 535 does hereby authorize the lease purchase of district improvements, providing for the financing thereof, and issuance of certificates of participation with respect thereto, awarding the sale thereof, and authorizing the execution of documentation relating thereto as provided in attachment C, D, E, and F. Move approval.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye. Roll call, sorry. Ms. Edgar. Mr. Barlow.
Aye.
Ms. Becker. Ms. Marvin.
Aye.
Mr. Sussner.
Aye.
Ms. Seelinger.
Aye.
Chair Workman.
Aye.
That's it for that one?
Thank you. Now we'll move on.
So, seven point oh two, acceptance of proposals for the sale and issuance of general obligation facilities maintenance bond, series twenty seventeen B. This is a briefing item. Mr. Munoz, Mr. Carlson.
So briefly, what the, we're using this funding for is to do an indoor air quality project at Hoover Elementary next summer. So in conjunction with doing the addition, it was a good time to also do renovation on the existing side at the same time. So these dollars are specifically for rehabbing the current facility at Hoover.
Okay. Well, we received five bids on this issuance as well. Morgan Stanley, in this case, submitted the lowest bid, and they've been a purchaser of your debt in the past, but not as frequently as Piper. Looking back to our May projections, we were estimating two point six one one percent, and final results came in at two point four three six. So, excellent, yeah. And once again, the, in this case, the first three bids were pretty much right on top of each other in terms of, we had to go out to point zero 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 before we saw that change.
You would like this to have?
I would like you to move this one to action as well, if you still desire.
I'll entertain a motion from somebody.
Move to action.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to move this to action. All those in favor of moving this item to action, please say aye.
Aye.
It is now an item action, an action item, sorry. And, make sure I have the right resolution here. Be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 535 does hereby authorize the issuance, awarding the sale, prescribing the form and details, providing the payment, for the payment of four million one hundred ten thousand dollars, general obligation facilities maintenance bond, series twenty seventeen B, and authorize the execution of documentation relating thereto as provided in attachment C. This is another roll call vote?
Motion.
Motion?
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor? Nope? Now it's a roll call, sorry. Mr. Barlow.
Aye.
Ms. Marvin.
Aye.
Mr. Sussner.
Aye.
Ms. Seelinger.
Aye.
Chair Workman.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
My excuse is that we're doing everything out of order tonight, so.
Well, once again, it was a pleasure to work with Rochester, and thank you for the privilege.
Thank you so much. Seven point oh six, resolution responding to recommendations of American Indian Education Parent Advisory Committee. This is an action item. Mr. Munoz.
Yes, there's, I'm just going to kind of give you a summary. Could you recall, last time we discussed this a few meetings ago, the board suggested that some of us meet with the parent advisory committee? And we did. We met with them, and I think we were able to come to a resolution and, basically, in the area of, our reading specialist will be working with Guthrie to, specifically, he's going to help provide some appropriate textbooks to use and any other guidance that he can provide the reading specialist for those Native American Indian students who are not proficient in reading. And then as far as data requests, we will provide him, it's a early indicator system, which is track students' attendance behavior and academic progress. So we will, that generally has been a report that's generated every six weeks. So we will generate a report for the Native American students and provide that to Guthrie so he's aware of what students are at risk. And we will also provide NWA data and discipline data to him as well. We did, in working with our legal counsel, which he, they suggested very strongly that we, that the parent committee and Guthrie understand that he is not allowed to share that data with the parent committee because he will be getting individual students' names that he'll be, that he's working with and information on them. However, he can share summary data with the parent committee. So this is something that they're comfortable with and we are comfortable with. So my recommendation is that we agree to their request, and if the board chooses to do that, then we will turn the appropriate documentation into MDE that is required.
Any questions, Board members?
No questions but input?
Sure.
I just wanted to thank the superintendent and staff for the openness and willingness to meet and to objectively consider the concerns which were presented. And I, I think it only enhances the overall strength of this district when we're willing to sit down and listen and consider and work together. And so I'm very thankful for, to support these recommendations.
Agreed. I need to read the resolution?
We need a motion.
We need a motion first?
To approve.
To approve?
Oh, no.
No, it's an action item, isn't it?
It's an action item.
Okay, that was your mistake, right?
That was mine's.
Keep in track, I'm ahead.
That's rare.
Now therefore, be it resolved as follows. One, the School Board hereby approves the following responses to the advisory committee's recommendations. Request number one, the reading specialist at each elementary school coordinate with the American Indian liaison to consult for leveled book material and parent involvement for any K-five American Indian student behind reading level. The action steps for this work include, one, teacher communication. The American Indian liaison will contact elementary teachers to ensure they know who the American Indian students are in their classrooms. The liaison will request to be involved in discussion regarding reading plans for students falling behind at reading level. Two, reading specialist communications. The American Indian liaison will contact the reading specialist to communicate with the district support available and request coordination for material and any added family outreach for all American Indian students they work with. Three, progress updates and follow-up. Two-way periodic communications will occur regarding needs and progress of students. Liaison will be included in discussions regarding American Indian student. Liaison will check in at any point when new materials are available or new relevant information comes in from student or family. District response, the district has determined this request will be honored. The individual student data received by the American Indian liaison will not be shared because it raises potential data privacy issues. Request number two, the advisory committee asked for the American Indian liaison to receive the early indicator report from each school building to reference for American Indian students, as well as receive a monthly discipline report specifically run for K-12 American Indian students, and also be provided with NWEA testing data for American Indian students. District response, the district has determined this request will be honored. The individual student data received by the American Indian liaison will not be shared because it raises potential data privacy issues. Two, the district superintendent or his designee is directed to provide a copy of this resolution to the advisory committee to implement this resolution and to take any other appropriate action to ensure the district is in compliance with the procedural requirements of Minnesota statute one twenty-four D point seven eight. Three, the School Board thanks the members of the advisory committee for their input and their work on behalf of the district's American Indian students. Move approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Do we do discussion again? Any, any more discussion? I would certainly like to echo Mr. Barlow's earlier comments. I think we got off to a little bit of a rocky start on this whole process, and I'm just absolutely thrilled that it was resolved to everyone's satisfaction. So, once again, it just shows that when people really put their minds to it, we can get the hard work accomplished. So, thank you for all of those who participated in this process. Any other comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Seven point oh seven, approval of change order zero zero one for Lincoln K-eight District Wide Option School Indoor Air Quality Project. This is a briefing item. Mr. Munoz.
Yes, at this time, I'll call Mr. Scott Sheridan, Executive Director of Facilities.
Good afternoon, Board members.
Good afternoon.
Instead of good evening, yes. I'm here to brief you on the change order zero zero one for the Lincoln K-eight District Wide Option School Indoor Air Quality Project. If you remember, on February twenty-first, the School Board approved the proposal from Carl S. Anderson for this project, and on February twenty-eighth, we had our first clarification meeting with them and went through all kinds of additions, value adds, deductions, those kinds of things. And the facilities department, Construction Services Division, we agreed to six of the value additions to this indoor air quality project, and they related to a variety of topics, including wall insulation, added fencing, scope of security, moving, moving costs, et cetera. Just a note, the two higher, higher dollar items that you saw on there, the moving contractor, the add of seventy-three thousand plus, normally, the district, in our past projects, we hired Normally, the district, in our past projects, we hire the moving company to do that separately. This time, we, we wanted to make that the requirement of the contractor. That way, the contractor could coordinate the moving out and the moving back in based on the schedule that, that they could do versus us having to get involved in that. And so we, we put that on them, agreed to let them add that to their, their contract. And in the security scope of work, we added some more security features to several doors, keypads, door buzzers, those kinds of things. And we wanted that scope of work done by Pappy, who does all of our security systems in the district. And so those two high dollar items are what caused it to be over $100,000 and hence here in front of the board.
Board members, do you have any, any questions?
I have one question.
Yes.
Do you remember offhand what the approximate cost of this indoor air quality project is?
Right now, it's at $5,365,932. But there'll be some more change orders coming through.
I thought it was pretty high. Sometimes people get really excited about relatively big numbers. For me, anything over $1,000 is pretty big. But in the scope of this project, this is a relatively small amount of money in terms of the total cost.
It is, yes. We actually believe we have budgeted about $6.2 million for this entire project. So we're currently still under budget.
Wonderful. Is this something that you would like to have moved to action?
I would please. I assume they would like to get paid as soon as possible, the various companies.
Move to action.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion about moving this item to action? Hearing none, those in favor of moving this item to action, please say aye.
Aye.
It is now an action item. Be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 535 approves the AIA document change order number 001 for the Lincoln K-8 District-Wide Option School Indoor Air Quality Project in the amount of $109,502. Move approval.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Sheridan.
Thank you.
Item 7.08 Authorization to Increase Daily Teacher's Sub-Pay Rate. This is a briefing item, Mr. Munoz.
Yes, Mr. Carlson will brief this on the side. I would like to say just a couple of things. Just remind the board that during the budget process, we had a conversation about this. We did eliminate the, I called them permanent subs, I'm not sure what our official term was, but we did eliminate those positions. But we did set aside a budget to enhance our subpay and make some other adjustments that we hope will increase the availability or the amount of subs that we're able to pull from the list that we share with everybody here in southeast Minnesota. I think it's a great plan. Not only are we gonna increase the pay, the daily pay, that will make us very competitive in southeast Minnesota, but I think we're also offering some, a nice incentive that will encourage subs to wanna work in our district many days. And also, one of the things that we did learn in having conversation with subs is that we were probably the only district in southeast Minnesota that pays monthly, whereas everybody else pays every two weeks. So we are gonna change the frequency of when we pay our subs. So we're hoping a combination of all these things that John's gonna share with you will help with our, our sub shortage.
Hello again. And this time, I'm pinching for Carl, 'cause he was out of town tonight. So what we've got here is a proposal to raise the daily sub rate. This has not been addressed since 2012, so we've had the same subpay rates for about five years. And we feel like that could be part of the reason why it's sometimes hard to get daily subs into our districts. So currently, the rate is $55 for a half day, $105 for a full day. That's for those who had worked less than 30 days in the previous school year. And then, the other rate is $125 for a full day or $65 for the half day if you've worked 30 or more days in the previous school year. It also apply to retired Rochester Public School teachers immediately upon becoming a substitute. What we're proposing is moving the half day or keeping the half day rate the same at $65, but moving the full day to $130. So it'd be an increase of five for those that have worked 30 or more days, but it would be an increase of 25 because this would apply to everybody, just flat 130 from day one. The other little carrot that we came up with to put in there to encourage more repetitive subs to take more jobs was to get a $1,000 stipend after 120 full days. So once they hit that, they would have earned that extra $1,000 payment. I believe we would pay that to them in June each year. And as superintendent also said, we are gonna switch to a bi-month or a semi-monthly pay cycle, so on the 15th and the last day of the month. So currently, if you worked a sub job maybe on the 12th of the month, you might have missed a payroll cutoff and you wouldn't have gotten paid for that for 50 to 60 days after that. So this will speed up the amount of, lessen the amount of time from a sub getting cash in hand.
So you would go from 12 payments to 24 payments, not 26 payments?
Correct, 24 payments, so two times per month on set days.
Board members? Any questions? Is this something that you would like to?
Yeah, we, we would like to move this, just because Longfellow's already in session and we haven't needed any subs yet. But, you know, if we do, it would, it's easier to start paying them at the new rate instead of having to backtrack and take care of that.
Move to action.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion about moving this item to action? Hearing none, all those in favor of moving this item to action, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. It is now an action item. Be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 535 does hereby approve the following substitute daily teacher wages. Full day, $130; half day, $65; stipend after 120 full days, $1,000.
Move for approval. Second.
Is there any more discussion? Ms. Marvin?
Just a quick comment. I, I think we know how important our substitute teachers are when we ask people to come in and work with their kids, whether it's for a half a day or a full day. They have a big impact there. And anything we can do, and this isn't a huge, huge increase, but anything we can do to show them that we appreciate their expertise and the care and the professionalism that they bring to our classrooms, I think that's, it's really important. So increasing their pay a little bit as well as making it more accessible to them more quickly, I think both are really good ideas.
I have one further question. So the stipend after 120 full days, is that, could that be a combination of full days and half days?
Yes, it could be. So two half days will count as one full day. Yep.
It is now an action item. I already read it, didn't I?
Yeah, just need to vote.
We just need to vote.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Carlson. 7.09 Approval of 2017-2018 District Calendar Adjustments. This is a briefing item, Mr. Munoz.
Yes, if you recall during our study session, when we talked about the discipline data and talked about the professional development that we were doing and how difficult it was to provide that training to all of the instructional staff at the system and the, in the amount of time that we have. And I think I tossed out the, the idea potentially coming to the board with, at requesting additional time. So what we're asking tonight is to turn the four half days that we currently have in the calendar to make them into full days of no student contact, so we can have a full day of professional development. Now, we've been working and actually Janie shared the schedule with us at Cabinet today and we have just a few little tweaks that we have to make, but we believe that if we can turn the four half days into full days, by the end of the school year, we can get all teachers and paraprofessionals trained in envoy and the two levels of training with Dr. Shrock Holly on culturally responsive classrooms. So the way the schedule work out, there'll be, there's still, the schools are still gonna have some of their, for example, I may be, my building may be getting training with Dr. Holly in the morning and in the afternoon, you have your building half day that you normally have. So some, we're gonna end up with about the same amount of building time and some may have a little more building time than they currently have with the four half days. But we believe we have a schedule worked out that at the end of the school year, we can say all teachers and paraprofessionals have had the envoy training for the elementary and middle school and then everybody else has had the basic information on culturally responsive classrooms and then another session on strategies that you can use to, to have culturally responsive classrooms. So by allowing us to do this, we believe that it'll allow us to speed up the process of getting our staff trained in the equity work that we did this past year.
I have a question. So if we didn't do this, then we would be looking at perhaps spreading all this work over two years instead of one, is that what you would anticipate?
Yeah, it'd probably take us another year beyond this coming school year to do just what I mentioned. And then, our plan is if we can get everybody trained this current coming school year, then the next year, we will start working on historical trauma training for all staff. So, yeah, just basically, it's gonna speed up the process to do the equity training and work that we've been doing. I think we've shared with you that the leadership at every site and some members of the instructional staff at each site have gone through this training, but it's just difficult to get every, you know, 1,500 teachers and a large number of paraprofessionals in the amount of time that we currently have.
So it would be sort of like avoiding a summer slide that our students go through where teachers would get all of this training in the course of one year rather than having to spread it over two and perhaps have to reteach or other things like that?
Yeah, I guess that's one thing. I guess we didn't think about the, the slide of them forgetting stuff, but we're really, we were trying to, it sounds like there was some urgency in our community and the board to speed up the training process. So we put our heads together and say, how can we do that? And we chose the half days, 'cause one of the things we did hear from parents when we did go to the half days was it's difficult to find childcare for half a day. And if I know I have to do it for a full day, that may be easier. And I understand it's still gonna be a challenge for some, but that's why we, you know, we talked about why do we wanna go separate days or, or not? But it made sense to stick with the current schedule and just turn them into full days. And then we also had a conversation about tonight. If the board, should you vote on it tonight? Or should we allow a couple of weeks to, community to give you feedback? We, we saw that argument, then there was also the argument for the sooner we can let parents know that the calendar's changing, the better. So I think we really didn't land on, I think it's, either way, I think some are gonna wanna know right away so they can change their schedules because school's just around the corner. But I could see the argument for allowing you to have time to receive feedback from the community as well.
Mr. Schlesner?
When we have all-day professional development days like this, is SAC offered to families that want it for the whole day?
We have three sites, but I, I don't wanna make you believe that we can, we have the capacity to take care of every child in the three sites, but we do, yeah.
But for the parents that need it, there's options.
Right.
Ms. Marvin?
Two things. One, I, I understand that whenever we change the calendar, it's disruptive and that families, some whom plan their time out of year in advance can be inconvenient. However, especially for these days, when little kids are home, high school kids are home also, and hopefully with enough advanced notice that I think we're gonna be giving here, people can arrange for childcare. The other thing is I have to say that having full days for staff development, to me, is just best practice in terms of education because rather than, you know, providing important information from our staff and then having them walk away is not nearly as powerful as providing it for them and then providing them time where they can process it with other people they talk with, talk about what's gonna happen in this place, what don't I understand, how can we use that? And that's, I think that, that providing that time for staff is critically important and I think this calendar does a much better job of doing that.
Ms. Seelinger?
Yeah, I, I really appreciate that this decision has been made, one, because of the content of superintendent described. But, you know, just for our listening public, you know, this is not something that the district takes lightly, deciding on these staff development days. I've sat on the meeting confer where we've, we've looked at the proposals from Professional Development Committee and deciding is it half day best, is it full day best? And we know we can't please everyone, but to Director Marvin's point, it, it does seem like a full day is best for staff to really be able to absorb information and not have to kind of switch gears in the middle of the day with, with students. And, and also, I just, clarifying question for superintendent. So although we, we're, we're talking about the equity work we're gonna be providing on these staff development days, there is other staff professional development going on in other parts of the days that may include, for example, do we have some examples or just for generally, are we still doing the PLC work, things like that?
Yeah, I think it'll be a mix of sites will have some things that they've already have planned for this coming school year. PLC time could be part of it. And then, some of the back-to-school offerings that we are offering in August, there's not enough space for everybody to sign up for that, so there'll be an opportunity for them to take some of that as well.
And then, does this, how does this impact the number of days or hours that we have to have our students in class?
Well, the, the year, we had six snow days. We were still well within our, our requirement for meeting this state. So now, if we do this and have more than six days, you know, worst-case scenario, you, you cancel one of your early dismissals that you have in the spring and you go to school. But I, I don't anticipate that being a problem. You know, in the six years I've been here, we had that one year, if you recall, that was four of those days were temperature, they weren't snow. Typically, we've had two or three snow days every year I've been here. So with that, we'll be fine as far as ours.
I don't have a strong feeling, one way or the other, about whether we approve this tonight or not, but I'm just gonna move it to action, just to have that discussion.
Second.
It's been moved to action and seconded? Is there any discussion on moving this item to action? Mr. Barlow?
Just one comment, and the superintendent already alluded to it, and either way, you know, there probably will be feedback. Yet, if there's not a strong need to necessarily vote on it this evening, I would probably lean more so in favor of allowing the community an opportunity to at least provide input versus deciding and then us hearing about other input after the fact.
Any other comments? Ms. Seelinger?
I, I believe that because we're moving from half days to full days and that the calendar has been out, that these days are already marked on families' calendars, I think they're already on the radar, so therefore, I, I think I would lean more towards moving it forward tonight, just to give our parents a heads up earlier. And something like this, because, as I said, because they're already on the calendar, I don't think we'll get as much feedback, is my opinion.
Oh, Mr. Schlesner?
I'll weigh in a little bit here, just speaking for myself. I think this equity work that we're doing is extremely important. And I, as a board member, would certainly not, after having this sit for public comment time, I would not anticipate me changing my decision from moving from half days to full days. That's just my particular point of view. So at some point, I think we, I personally feel like we really have to, I really have to take a stand for doing what is the right thing. And to that point then, then I would certainly be happy to vote in favor of moving this to action for tonight, tonight for those reasons. But I certainly respect your comments, Mr. Barlow.
Any? Mr. Munoz?
Yeah, I don't, I, I sense-
Yeah, I don't, I sense tonight and when we had the conversation at the study session, I think the board is all very supportive of this change and the fact that the emphasis on the equity work we're doing and the importance of it, and we toss this around at cabinets. So I think we're all on the same page there. It's just a matter of when do we make that decision? I don't anticipate if we vote tonight or two weeks from now, the vote being any different. I think it's just a matter of, and we, to be honest with you, we couldn't come with a strong recommendation because part of it said, you know, the sooner we let parents know, that's best. But we also understand there may be some who want to voice their opinion, but I don't anticipate the vote being any different either time. It's just a matter of do you want to tell them right away or do you want to wait a couple of weeks? So I guess I just think we're all on the same page as far as the need to do something like this.
Any other discussion? It's an action item? It's not an action item? We have to vote on it first. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
To move to action?
To move to action, yes.
All those in favor of moving this item to action? Aye. Opposed?
This item is now an action item, just for clarification.
Can we vote on it again?
Be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 535 approves the 2017-18 calendar changes for district schools and Longfellow 4515 Elementary School.
Move approval.
Second.
Is there any more discussion?
Just a point of clarification. We did have a conversation with Longfellow. And we will, since they're on a little bit different calendar, there is, we'll have to do something different. We're not sure what that day will be, but we'll work with the school and coming back to see when, we talked with the administration and they didn't want to move their upcoming half-day to a full-day because of the short timeline and when they can notify parents. So we'll come back with something that they're going to do to address their extra half-day.
So can this resolution stand?
Yep, resolution's good as it written, yep.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
7.10, approval of revisions to the Policies and Procedures Manual. This is a briefing item. Vice Chair Marvin?
You know, everybody always enjoys going over the policies. I just, I need to point out for anybody that's listening that board members have copies of all the policies that we have been reviewing for the last several days. So it's, things don't get just rubber stamped. The board has the policies, the changes. Cabinet members have been very involved in making the kind of changes that are necessary. Mr. Munoz is involved in that, thank goodness for Ms. Edgar, who really keeps us up to date. So the changes that are made and the updates that are made are very purposeful and very mindful. Policy 303, Superintendent Selection. The only change there was language change from, we changed, Superintendent serves as the Chief Executive Officer of the school district before it was of the school board. Policy 405, Veterans Preference. This complies with the Minnesota Veterans Preference Act, which gives preference points for veterans who have the needed qualifications and are applying for employment for certain organizations, with certain organizations, including school districts. So it provides them some bonus points if they qualify in terms of getting a job and some additional protection in keeping jobs. The standard is a little bit different for teachers, but it absolutely is there to help veterans get and keep employment. Policy 414, the man, do you want me to stop in between? Should just go through them and then discuss later?
Well, as long as you stop. I mean, some of these policies, they're not necessarily policies that we have developed, but they are, many of them are required by state statute. Just so you have an idea of where we're coming from on that. It's not like we're trying to invent things on the fly here by any means. Thank you, Ms. Marvin.
Okay, Policy 414, mandated reporting of child neglect and abuse makes it clear that any school district employee must report a child who he or she suspects has experienced physical, emotional, sexual or sexual abuse or neglect. And we've also added a recommendation, and this is a recommendation only, but that I, School District 535 employees will report that same kind of suspected physical, emotional, sexual abuse or neglect, even if they are not in a position, even if they're in a position where they're not on the job. So we expect our employees to be looking out for kids no matter where they are.
But that's a recommendation.
That's a recommendation, yeah, that's, yes.
If I may?
Yes.
Whereas the other items are mandated reporting, and we're simply adding language that would be recommendations. I'm just curious, as to the enforcement aspect, if a district employee were not, were found to be noncompliant with the recommendation, would there be a consequence?
Now, the way it's worded, they're encouraged to report that we can't, because the law doesn't require them to, but we just put in the policy that we encourage very strongly that they also do that if they happen to observe that or aware of that outside of their duty as a teacher or whatever role they have within the system. But if they don't, we, the way it's written, we cannot hold them accountable if they don't do it outside of their job.
I think what this does is it helps employees to know, yes, it is okay if I do report this, even though it's not on my duty hours, because sometimes there's a question of, well, it's this kid, do I report it, don't I report it? So I think this gives them the encouragement to report it if they see it.
Yeah, because we often do get questions from staff that they say, well, I'm aware of this incident outside of school, am I required by law to report it? And this is hopefully to try to clarify that.
Mr. Workman?
Yes.
So for policy changes, I imagine they normally aren't broadcast to the district employers, but for this particular one, will this be brought to the attention of the district employees as a policy change?
Yeah, what significant policy changes that we believe impact staff is usually gone over during their back-to-school week when they have their building meeting.
Yeah, and also part of this policy is that for new employees, all of them will be given this policy at the beginning of their employment so that they're keenly aware of it. Also that we review this once a year to make sure it complies with state law. So we're doing that as well. The next one, Policy 506, Student Discipline. The rights, rules, and regulations are policies that need to be approved by the board and reviewed annually. The language in this policy has been changed to be a more easily acceptable, accessible, acceptable, accessible.
Accessible.
Yeah, accessible. There's been, there was some redundancy in it, so it's just, it's easier to read and to understand. But it provides expectations for student behavior and establishes guidelines for the ways in which that student behavior will be enforced. Bottom line for this policy is that this district will provide a safe and supportive environment for students and staff. It also outlines the expectations for students, staff, parents, and guardians. The executive director of Student Support Services, our principals, our superintendent, and the school board will support that safe environment. The rights, rules, and regulations are distributed every year to our students, our families, our staff. We also will have a student behavior handbook that will be distributed, which is quite a bit more family-friendly, outlining sort of the highlights of what the policies are.
Yeah, and we will, the next board meeting will bring the handbook and the rights, rules, and regs will be presented to the board. And the rights, rules, and regs does have to be approved by the board. The handbook doesn't. But I think when we, at our study session, we agreed that it would be good for us to share the actual handbook and the changes that were made with the board. So we'll do that at our next meeting.
Okay, next, Policy 509, Enrollment of Non-Resident Students. The change here is that if there are more students from outside the district who apply to come to a certain school inside the district, and if there are district employees outside the district who want their kids to go to that same school, we will give preference to district employees, to the children of district employees. You're, Ms., you're looking like this is, I understood it perfectly.
Yeah, no, just to clarify, sorry, that the staff can bring their student in from outside to their school or any school in our district?
The way the law's written, they open enrollment, the district gets to determine what school they go to. So it's not, they get to go to the school that they're happening to be, it may work out that way sometimes. A lot of it has to do with where there's room. But typically, for example, let's say we have twelve open enrollment requests for Building A or within the district in fourth grade. We only have six spots. So if there's any staff who work outside, who live outside the district, want to bring their child into the district, they would get preference before we do a lottery for the rest of the spots.
511, School Sponsored Fundraising. The difference here, the thing that remains the same is that all fundraising done in a school must be approved in advance by the building administrator. The addition here is this includes fundraisers that are conducted online through social media like GoFundMe and other online fundraisers. Those have to be approved as well. 511.01, and there's a change here that is going to be involved in a number of these. This is fundraising by non-school organizations. Change here is that snacks that are sold in school for consumption in school during the school day must meet the new Smart Snacks criteria. There is a federal law about food sold during the school day. Minnesota chose not to opt out of this law, and it gives fairly very tight restrictions in terms of the portion size, the calorie count, the sodium count of snacks that kids get during the day. So whether they're served through the nutrition service or they're sold by a fundraising organization or some other entity, they have to meet those restrictions. And that's what that one is about.
And you may hear some chatter as board members. I think this one may be some resistance for some staff, but it is, like I said, it's the law. The state has chosen not to seek the waiver. So we are going to have to make some changes on the fundraisers where we're selling food to students. Not, not if they are selling pizzas out in the community, that doesn't count. It's whenever we have fundraisers in the school or providing food to students, there's pretty strict requirements that they have to follow, as Jean mentioned. And there is a process in place that before they authorize a fundraiser, not Superintendent, the principal has to work with Sherri to make sure that what they're selling meets the requirements of the law. So you may hear a little chatter, and this will be a policy that we will hit pretty hard at the staff meetings. So they're well aware of the changes in that.
And this was, these are items that can be consumed in school by students, correct?
In school by students, yeah.
So one of the questions that came up when the policy committee met was, well, you know, what about frozen cookie dough? You know, some people might like to eat frozen cookie dough in school, but it's not intended to be eaten during school, it's not a consumable, so that would be outside of this particular requirement.
Ms. Seelinga?
Yeah, so I appreciate this and appreciate that there will be some questions, let's say. And I actually spoke with Sherri Knutson, Student Nutrition Director. I actually spoke with Mr. Queasy about this just by happenstance and was pleased to know that Ms. Knutson had worked with policy on, policy committee on this. But, you know, my sort of message was, our students are really creative, and so instead of perhaps selling the Valentine's Orange Crush Soda, perhaps they think of something that's a non-food bearing item for that kind of fundraiser, and that's a really easy way to get around it and better for our students and better for, better for their well-being. So I think that they can use their creative minds and figure out different things to sell besides food that's really not so great.
We put a positive spin on it. There you go.
Yeah, and then the only other thing that may reach your level is any, if we are bringing a vendor, like a restaurant, to come in and sell food to our students, the food has to meet the guidelines and the portions have to meet the guidelines. So that may restrict, because I know some of our schools have done that in the past. However, does not, one of the questions we asked was, for part of the tailgating for football games, they'll have a restaurant come in and sell food at the game. That doesn't meet, it's outside of the hours, so it does not have to follow those requirements. But if somebody would bring somebody in to try to sell something during lunchtime, food has to meet the requirements and the portion size have to. So that may limit people that we bring in for things like that.
And just to clarify, it is just through thirty minutes after the end of the school day, so, yes, the tailgating or they can sell their orange crush thirty minutes after the parking lot.
Junk food, damn. So it is, I think, as Mr. Munoz said, going to change the way things are done in some of our buildings. But just to be clear, it's a federal law. It's not just ours, it's a federal law. Feel better about that. Okay, Policy 515, Protection and Privacy of Pupil Records. The only change here was the language changed from no child left behind to Every Student Succeeds Act. Policy 533, this has to do, the wellness federal law about food sold during the school day, this again has to do with the Smart Stack thing, snack thing, that there are specific guidelines that must be followed in terms of the kind and the amount of food served to kids. Policy 720, Food and Beverage Vending. Principals continue to be in charge of the vending machines in their buildings, and the vendors can work with Student Nutrition and must comply with the Smart Snacks guidelines. Finally, Policy 721, Uniform Grant Guidance Policy Regarding Federal Revenue Sources. That's my favorite one. It provides stronger language about sanctions against any school district employee or representative who violates the Conflict of Interest provision. And that's it.
Board members, are there any other questions that you have for Ms. Marvin or the policy committee?
Action.
Second.
We cannot, according to policy, we have to wait until the next meeting to approve this, so we cannot move it to action tonight. This gives the community lots of time to weigh in on how many ounces is required to be in a particular snack and the nutritional requirements for that. And I will say that Sherri Knutson and her staff are absolutely wonderful at taking charge of this. They were very, very good at answering the questions that we had during our policy committee meeting. So I would really like to compliment them on keeping track of all of this so that we don't have to.
Sure.
Yes, not to beat the, to keep running on my broken record, but there's lots of information about the Smart Snacks. If you don't want to contact Sherri Knutson, you want to go online, MDE or elsewhere, but these actually, rules actually took effect in July 1st, 2014. So we have just, not we, just our Rochester School Board, but a lot of district states have taken some time to get these policies enacted, but they've actually been out there quite some time.
This meeting is adjourned at 5:31 PM.